All right, Jim, can you start?
Okay.
Great. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Okay. It appears that we have a forum. The meeting tonight is being recorded, video recorded and audio recorded. Okay. First item on the agenda, vote to approve the educational and human services meeting minutes of February 23rd, 2019. That needs to be amended to the 13th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion? Okay, there being no discussion, all those in favor of approving minutes? All those opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. So 401. Okay. Item number two, discuss the appointment of James Coles to the trustees of soldiers, sailors, marines and airmen memorials for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2021, and vote to recommend to council for confirmation.
So moved.
Second.
And second. Great. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, glad to see another person on the committee to help our veterans and to be on this particular board, the trustees of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airman memorial. I know that there's somewhat of an agenda to look at for this committee in terms of our memorials. Jim is a veteran, a 21-year retired Navy chief, so he brings a lot of experience in the military with him, and I'm glad that he's agreed to serve on this committee.
Is Jim here?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you're willing to help us out. That's really nice of you. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you, Dr. You just a quick question because we see appointments come up and in this particular instance, it's a two-year term that expires in two years and three months. I don't think that's typical or conventional. I'd rather see it have the expiration as it should be and state it as a three-year term. I don't know how it reads in the bylaws for the formation of the committee, but this is not a two-year term. This exceeds a two-year term, so I just think we ought to be aware of that.
Okay.
And I'm very pleased to see fine veterans stepping forward. Thank you.
Me.
Mr. Chairman, drop it.
I believe, I think Counselor Adams, I think that's what he was going to respond to, too. It's the way the board is set up. It is, I believe, one, two, and three-year terms.
It is.
So that's what, fill in those terms so that when they get to, so that would be what a term would be. So I take your point as well taken, so it wouldn't be, if it's a three, is it a three-year position?
It's a two-year term.
If it's a two-year term, it's just so that we could fill them, would expire for, rerun for a two-year term. I think.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, it is three, two, and one. I believe Mr. Lacoste will receive the three-year. These two, tonight, would receive just the two-year. Ms. Gears received a one-year. That makes it all four. I don't think there's a second, third. I'd have to look at the bylaws, but you're right. We approved this the other night during town council, the same thing, about the same way, but I think this is just normal protocol that we've been going through because it was even on the agenda at the town council. I don't know if we do it to two years and three months, two years and four months, but at this point in time, it would just be a two-year for him. I don't know if that clarifies anything.
No, Counsel, I don't need clarification. What I'm saying is a matter of practice, we're out of order, and I will, of course, support it, but I think that if there's ever a question, we should be very clear in the way that we go about doing these things. It is not with objection to the candidate or fulfilling the seats on the committee. It may seem like semantics, but this exceeds a two-year term, and that's my problem with the deal.
Right.
So I'm not going to hold it up. I just wanted on record that I pointed out something that should be investigated. I'll leave it to the town manager to consider that when making subsequent appointments to town council or recommendations for appointments, but otherwise, I'm fine. Thank you.
And I think your point is well taken, because if it's a two-year term, it's a two-year term. And I think we would have to look at, and I'm not familiar with those personnel regulations as to, when we point, say, auxiliary police officers, it's for a three-year term. And I'm not clear if we say that the three-year term ends at a certain point or not, you know, where the three appointments come in at different points during the year. So if it is a two-year term, then I would just simply have this amended to say that it's a two-year term to expire on that date, and it's going to be up to the town hall to make sure that they keep track of what those appointment dates are.
So we can amend it if you'd like, that we can actually change that over to March 13th, 2021. That's simple.
Because then we just have to revisit it to fulfill the rest of that term, June 30th or whatever it is.
I don't suggest an amendment. I'm just calling it to our attention, Counselors. No, if I may. No, the point would be, it wouldn't be amended, it would be that the term would expire, and my suggestion would be March 25th, because that would be the appointment date when it goes to council, that it would expire two years from that date, and then it would have to come back for reappointment two years from the date. That's typically how reappointments are done.
I'd be happy to suggest we make that amendment at council rather than just get it through committee.
Let me look at the bylaw again, too. I want to look at the bylaw. I don't think there's anything besides a three, two, and one. It doesn't say June or July, it just says two, three, three, two, one. I'll look it again before the council to give you more feedback. Okay?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Five votes. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Coles. See you in front of the town council. Agenda item number three, discuss the appointment of Basabel Lopez to the trustees of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen memorials for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2021, and vote to recommend to council for confirmation.
So moved.
Second.
And second. Great. Any discussion?
Again, Mr. Chairman, this is another veteran, over 23 years of military service, holds a rank of Chief Warrant Officer III in the Army, Afghanistan veteran, and current member of the Massachusetts Army National Guard, and we're very proud to have her be on this committee.
Mr. Adams.
Just want to make, for the record, talk about, this is four of five for the trustees memorial board, so that makes up the forum come the 25th of March. So I'm real pleased to look forward to set up an agenda for you guys, and then you guys work from that point on. So I appreciate it. I haven't met you yet, but you'll see me quite often. Anyways, that's all I wanted to say, but I'm looking forward to working with these veterans and non-veterans for our memorials around here. Thanks.
Counselor Adams.
Mr. Chairman, I do know this candidate well. I think she's a great addition to bring forward. I know she's eager to get involved in other veterans affairs locally, and I think it's great that we have this generation of veterans that can forward, as well as the previous candidate for these positions.
I kind of joke with her because, you know, I said a number of times, you don't have to call me sir. It's like an instinct with military people, is they go over and over again, sir, but a very nice personality, and it was enjoyable talking to her. And she's military 100% through and through, so I thought that was a really good thing.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five votes. Mrs. Lopez, thank you very much. We'll see you in front of the council.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, very good. Agenda item number four, a discussion and update on the state of the stoppage schools with Dr. Jeffrey Villar, the Assistant Superintendent of the Stoppage Public Schools, as well as his staff.
I'm going to have a meeting with me. I'd like to discuss something. So we'll set up a meeting. Give me a time to when you're good. I'm going to be ready for it.
I'll begin by apologizing. These are smaller print. I thought this would be auxiliary, not the actual presentation, but projecting here doesn't seem like a great idea. I think we have enough focus in the audience, too. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you, and hopefully we can have a good conversation and attempt to try to present some information and talk about where we're headed, because we got candidly an awful lot of work to do. I will point out that I have my team here, so Jose Ortiz, Seth Rousin, and Margot Ferick all here to support. I appreciate that. They work extremely hard and very long hours to try to get things done, so I'm glad they're here. I thought I would kind of return to some of the topics I first shared with the town council, now months ago. You know, turnaround plan obviously is supposed to be guiding our work, and what I did when I came here about a year ago is try to identify what key strategies identified in the plan can we really double down on focus and make sure we get it right, begin to get an impact moving forward, because the capacity of change in the organization, there's a lot called for in the turnaround plan, and to get it done, it takes a special amount of focus. And so we're really looking at the use of data, trying to acquire, keep, retain, or train our talent, that's leadership from central office all the way through our schools, and really focus on quality instruction. For me, curriculum instruction is the core of our business, and we have to do that particularly well. So that's how we've maintained our focus. A primary objective this year is to set our climate and culture to a place where we can all be proud and we can really make progress, because when people think of climate and culture, we think of discipline in school. That is a huge part of it, and that is interrelated with quality instruction, engagement, making sure that students enjoy coming to school and feel like it's worthwhile. So there's a lot of work that has to be done around that to set the stage for student learning. So taking on culture became very obvious to me from day one, as they went around to take a look at where things are, and you might recall me talking about looking for happy students and happy teachers, because I think that's an important part of school being attractive for kids and engaging kids. I'm really pleased, and we've mentioned this a few times, but it's really a big deal, that we've been able to forge a relationship with the University of Connecticut. They support Massachusetts, the State Department of Massachusetts statewide on an implementation of PBIS. Had been working previously with the district as a part of a statewide cohort, but through connections that Margot Ferick, my Assistant Superintendent, has, relationships that I've had prior, we were able to work deeper with UConn, and then UConn received a federal grant to support its work around PBIS nationally.
Could you define PBIS so we know what it is?
Yeah, I'm going to go into detail on it. Positive behaviors, interventions, and supports. It's all about improving school climate, setting the stage for students to be successful. UConn received a great deal of federal money to work nationally on implementing this across the country. Their researchers were looking for a district where they could make a significant impact, and they chose us. They came to us, and they, through Margot and I, we sat down, had some conversations, and they said, no, we are very interested in partnering with you. That meant that we got their technical assistance for the next five years at no cost. So not only were we getting support from the state originally, but now we have a relationship, a long-term, five-year relationship with a major university that's seen as a world leader in this work, one of two universities that really led it, the University of Oregon's the other. So we're really pleased that we have that support from that team. And that means monthly meetings with the leadership team at the district level, and regular meetings with our school leadership teams, which I'll get into, support off-site professional development quite a bit, and there's a lot behind that. And again, not a cost to us, so that was huge for us. We're very excited by it, because it's a significant need that we have. And I think part of it was because we made this our focus, but they said, well, you guys really understand the importance of this work, so that's, I think, part of why they decided to work with us. To support this work as a district, we had to update our student information management system, and that's a big deal. It started, the planning phase has actually started a year ago. We use a system called Aspen. This tracks all the data around students, the demographics, the academics, attendance, you name it, anything that touches a student in school runs through that student information system, and the system that the district had prior was significantly integrated. A lot of the data were questionable, so we engaged in that, and I'm very happy that this year we can say that it's fully up and running, Aspen works, the data is valid, teachers have been trained. You know, every person in our district had to learn how to use a new system. That's a big deal for an organization, but that is now considered, you know, check that's working. It's underway. Connected to that, we implemented a graphical system called Swiss that allows us to dive deeper into student discipline data. So it actually works with Aspen, trying to restore the data, but this gives us a visualization tool that allows teams of teachers and building leaders to really begin to use data to drive decisions around climate, culture, and environment in our schools, and I'll get a little bit more into that. But again, that was a heavy lift, implement a new system. We got some kudos. UConn hadn't seen a district implemented as quickly as we were able to do, and I'm going to give that credit to Margot and the tech team, because they really pushed pretty darn hard to make that happen, because we know that data is really important to us, because we're trying to use it to drive all of our decision makings. Making sure you have systems that work was really, really important. So very quickly, what is PBIS? Essentially, it's a, what we call a multi-tiered system of support for students in school. So the concept, you'll see on the paper, there's a triangle, and the idea is to create a system that supports students to be successful, where 80% of your children are successful with what we call your normal daily activity, or tier one. The normal goings of classroom, school operation should be supported so that 80% of your kids are thriving in that environment, knowing that there are going to be kids with special needs where that's not enough. And so then you would tier up, and then the next chunk, the yellow on the pyramid, it's about 20% or 15% of your students. And then there's that red piece, which is about 5%. And the idea is to create a system where you have increasing levels and layers of support to constantly ensure that kids are successful. So regular class isn't functioning enough, add something. That's not working, add something. But the key is to use data to make those decisions, not just a gut feeling, what it looks like today, but what the data tells you over time. Part of it's academic, part of it's discipline data, part of it's, you know, the interactions with students. We try to capture all that in Swiss. So putting in a multi-tiered system of support is all about beating kids' needs. PBIS specifically does this around climate and culture. So the idea is to create a system that supports the best conduct of students, the highest levels of engagement, and then support that throughout your school. It requires, you know, us to really focus on data, to teach students what we expect. So that's really explicit teaching. We actually, when we implement at a school, that means teaching children what the expectations are in every aspect of the school, playground, cafeteria, hallway, bathroom, classroom, bus, you name it, for lessons, and they're delivered, and they're explicit teaching that this is what we expect around responsibility, safety, et cetera. When you do that, then you monitor your discipline, you create systems to reinforce and encourage kids to do what you, your expectations and follow through, catch them being good, we like to say, and really come from that focus. It can really begin to then allow you to have the resources necessary to provide other kids with individualized interventions when they need them. Really important point, this does not mean that we do not discipline children. Children do require discipline. It's a box, right? There's carrot, stick. You've got to have that for all children. I have six. Believe me, they, sometimes they've got to get in trouble. But the idea is to create an environment where that's less likely to happen, and the assumption is we can do things that make it more likely that kids make good choices. And part of that is teaching them our expectations. So it's a very important, purposeful action on the part of schools. Another really important part about this is it has to be led by teachers. So at each school, there's a team of teachers that are doing all the planning work, the training work, and the execution with their staff. It's not something that I can walk in and say, this is, this is the system you're going to use. It's teachers talking about their school, their expectations in their school, how are they going to work with administration to create an environment that works for all those students in the school. And I think that's a critical piece, because so often, particularly here, to be honest, things are done to teachers rather than by teachers. And we really need to be sure that our teachers are part of all of our solutions, and this is teacher-driven. And it's making a big difference, for sure. What I'd like to point out is, well, how do you know it's making a big difference? That's a pretty big claim, and I got to tell you, we have a long way to go. But PBIS, this system is a scientific system. There are tools that have been created that are used to measure the impact. So we actually use things like, and there's an example here, of the team implementation checklist, again, working with the university that developed and validated these tools. We use quarter surveys, quarterly surveys of students and families in an annual climate survey, and we also, again, look at student discipline data regularly. This table on the bottom, you'll see the TIC data. What's important about that is right now, I have one school in the district that reaches a threshold that suggests they have what we call tier one PBIS implemented. It means there's, you know, five other schools that do not, that are working towards that, making progress, but according to our measurements, we can't say that they're fully implemented. And I believe that's a very important point, just because often in education, we say we're doing things. We say we're working on some initiative. Those of you who've been on school committee or, you know, you've been an educator, there's always like, we're doing this, and you train staff, you have a PD, and then you go underway, and there's generally not a lot of attention paid to whether or not, the extent to which this is happening, and how well, and where. Through PBIS, it's all about measuring the extent to which you're implementing and how well, because you want to know the impact of your actions on students. So we measure the adult actions and the student actions. So this TIC data is just an example. I can say, all right, I know one school where this is implemented. The others are still making progress, but I'm not surprised. When I look at the next page, which is some of the elementary discipline data, you start to see some relationships between implementation and improving implementation. And we talk about the state of the schools in general. You'll see on this chart, this is a count of referrals in our elementary schools, and we encourage all staff, every instance that, an area where there's some student misconduct needs to be reported. I've gone on record in writing to staff, principals have told staff, no teacher is going to be called out on the carpet for writing too many disciplinary referrals if there are things that require to be referred, because the data is really, really important to us. We need to understand what's happening, where, why, what the motivation is. So as you can see in these charts, September, October, beginning of November, we're kind of rough across the schools. We had eliminated 31 positions in the district prior. At least 12 were special education positions. A good six to nine, I think off the top of my head, were educational assistants, and it was clear that it impacted what happened in schools. It was not my favorite launch, as I looked at the data. Again, monitoring this type of information, we quickly said we need to make some changes because these data are not where we want to be. Couple things happened. Our PBIS did start to become implemented with much more fidelity, as you'll see in the Charlton Street School in particular, and then we also added back programming, using monies from Hurricane Maria, some of the extra money that I received through the DESI Support Grant. We started to put back and expand some of our special ed positions. We've just, these data can't be this way. We need to have schools where kids are, again, happy, engaged in learning. And so you can see there was a pretty dramatic increase. To all disclosure, we still have schools that have a long way to go, but we're making good progress. An interesting point I draw your attention to, Eastford Road, which is really about 65% implemented with our PBIS initiative on tier one, which is the basic level, they got a spike, you can see, in February, about 18 referrals, and so when you look at these days, why is it, like, that's kind of alarming to see a spike? And it is. I'd ask you to take a look on page five. So what you do when you see that is our teams delve into, and this is a screenshot of a piece of the Swiss system that allows us to analyze our data, and this is a student from that school who represents 13 referrals in that period of time. So this one individual student has a story, and there's, something's going on here. Now, I can't get into detail about what it is, and that's why we blocked out the information about the student, but the point being, we can now begin to say, is this an environmental issue, or is this an individual student issue? And then we can begin to plan for what needs to happen, because the premise is it shouldn't have 13 referrals. That's not acceptable, and that for, something has to change. So these data allow us to begin to do that dive and begin to analyze what we need to do differently to get a different result. Again, we are only up and running in one school with fidelity, but this happens to be a school that's at 65%, and the system is starting to take hold. It's about teaching adults new systems, training them, and that takes a long time because we're changing how people do work. The next slide you can see is a snapshot of our middle high school, and these data are really erratic. So it's up and down, not good, and there's a couple of things I reflect on, and I spend a lot of time there, and I know some, I brought many folks here toward the building with me. You know, we still have not launched PBIS. There has been, for a large part of the year, undefined disciplinary system, right? It's not clear. A large volume of administrative and teacher turnover. At the middle school, there's not one administrator there today that began the school year in the school. The whole staff changed out. Staffing overall, I'll get into, but there's been a massive fluctuation in staffing across our schools. Now we have a large number of inexperienced teachers in the secondary schools in particular. And then for a long time, there was a reluctance to submit data, so some of these numbers could be even higher. So it's not a pretty picture. When we delved into this, one of the biggest reasons for disciplinary referrals in our secondary schools is class cuts, students avoiding class, which speaks to engagement, needs for student supports. There's a lot of layers to that, but it's a significant issue that we are facing and need to address. Part of our strategy to do that is to get in and take a look at what's going on with instruction. Obviously, I said earlier, teaching and learning is the core of our business. The extent to which we do that well, it improves some of these climate culture issues, they're interrelated, one to the other. A class that's not engaging can lead to more misconduct, misconduct can interrupt learning, so they're interrelated. It's not a simple relationship. But what have we done to try to focus on instruction this year is really a couple key areas. The elementary level, making sure we have a uniform literacy program in place across our schools. And then you'll see, there's a snapshot. We use a tool that we created using a shared Google site where we electronically, monthly gather data on implementation of our literacy program, walking through all classrooms, observing for certain elements of instruction, and that allows us to capture those data and, again, have an idea about what's happening in classes, and then we look at what's happening with students on their assessment data, and start to compare the, and use that information to determine what our next steps are. So it's really important to me, again, to have that adult data, so what are we doing, and is it having an impact? Our mid-year assessment data, we use DIBELS for our basic literacy skills. It's just, it's an assessment, comes out of the University of Oregon. And what it really basically says to me is we need significant student intervention, and we continue to need professional development time for our teachers, to continue to help and support them. Again, we have a lot of new teachers. At ERS this year, kindergarten, first grade, as a result of these data, we were able to create immediately an intervention block and schedule kids based on what their assessments as their weaknesses are. We've placed those kids into these small group learning environments for about 45 minutes a day, and we're tracking those data. We've got about a week to go for the end of our six-week period, and we'll see what impact that's had on these very important core early literacy skills. This is decoding. This is beginning to understand how to break words apart and learn the phonics and the syllables, et cetera. So it's really important that kids get these skills at an early age. It's a great place for me to invest, because this is what pays off as kids get older, Basbel Reed. So the data has made, already driven some decisions on what we're going to do at ERS. At the secondary school, we focused again on our language arts and mathematics. We've implemented a new language arts curriculum this November, based on data that we captured. You can see this table here. It says MS Visit One, MS Visit Four, High School Visit One, High School Visit Four. We've obviously done four walkthroughs in our secondary schools using this tool developed by a partner we're working with. It's called the IPG, but the bottom line is it's looking for standards-based instruction. So there's some very specific... using this tool developed by a partner we're working with. It's a, called the IPG. But the bottom line is, it's looking for standards-based instruction. So there's some very specifics that we need to see in a classroom. Teams of our leaders, and our teacher leaders, have been kind of calibrated in how to use this tool, as well as our partners. And we go through, and we're looking for this change. Based on our first observation, we knew that we had to make a change in our curriculum, where we saw zero text complexity in our middle school classrooms. That meant they weren't using rigorous texts to teach language arts. I'm happy to tell you, by our fourth visit, after implementing our new curriculum, we saw 100% of our lessons being taught with rigorous, complex text. That's critically important for our kids to be successful moving forward. I'm not saying it's easy. It's, it's a heavy lift. But kids are now engaged with grade-level content. It's very important. Saw that also at the high school, moving from about 50% to 100% of the time. Made a huge shift. Teachers have told us what it's allowed them to do is focus on how they're teaching the kids in front of them, and not on the what. Because there was a lot of variability on the what, prior to this curriculum being implemented. In mathematics, we have similar data and similar results. We will be implementing the 9 through 12 version of Illustrated Math in the fall. It's actually not yet published. We have it in place, 100% of our math classes in grade 6 through 8. And we're seeing improvement there. This is granular stuff, to be very honest. This is about very specific teaching practices that are linked to student learning improvement. So this is going to take time for us to catch up, or we need to go on large-scale assessments. So I'm not standing here telling you, "Oh, this year, we're going to get the MCAS. We're going to knock it out of the park." This is the core, beginning, solid curriculum, solid instructional strategies, which will allow us to get to a place where we make a major difference. This is a long-term project. This work takes years, and I've said that since day one. But it's encouraging. This, these results don't always happen, based on this work. Our partners will tell us in other places. So our folks, our teachers are really engaged in our language arts and math to make this work. We're trying really hard. There's a lot that they have to deal with to get there. And so we're very proud of how hard they're working. The other thing I wanted to raise this evening was the Southridge Academy. So last year, I would tell you, was doing a great job of containing students, but not necessarily meeting their needs. Over the summer, Margot Farrick and her team worked real hard, really wrote an application to be licensed as a therapeutic hybrid day school, which means we were able to bring in a lot more support for kids there. We have about 40 students that ranges, and I'm pleased to say, kids go from the academy to the high school, based on their needs, and back sometimes. And it's no longer just containing kids. It's starting to really meet their needs. We still, again, with everything, it's a growth, it's progress, it takes time. But I can certainly tell you, if we talk with the chief, the police don't spend the time there anymore, right? It's not like it was a phone call a day. There are systems and structures in place now where kids are much more engaged. Now, we still have attendance issues, still have kids with huge learning gaps. We have kids with emotional needs, significant trauma, and different issues. But things are much more tuned to meeting their needs and bringing them along. We actually celebrated recently our first graduate from the program. So that's a pretty big deal to me. That student probably wouldn't have graduated without the support. So, to me, that's a big deal. It's also important to point out, it probably saves us about $450,000. Because these are students, if we can't service in our district, we're paying out. It's expensive tuitions and transportation costs. We've actually brought students back, I want to say 12, thank you. Students back into the district, it's a big savings, it's a big deal. We are working out, fingers crossed, we have applicants for a grant to try to expand this program. We've gotten to the next phase. For us, we're, again, hoping, because we see this as becoming a thread for alternative high school for students that could ultimately kind of be the tail that wags the dog to help us go to some redesign work at our regular high school, where these students would be in a pathway for graduation. That's very therapeutic, very supportive, and serves us up to maybe 100 students, if that's what's the need. So we'll, we'll keep working on that grant, and hopefully, we'll see it happen. I kind of woven these challenges in between my comments, but it can't be, not set enough. Talent, and that's not because we don't have talent. The issue is recruiting talent for the vacancies we have, which has been a struggle all year. To be very clear, we have substitute teachers in classrooms now, not to save money, but because we can't hire teachers. There was a comment made last night that's just not accurate. It's really important to note. I would pay whatever it takes to get a good math, good science, good English teacher into our classrooms. We've been posting for months on end for certain positions, special ed, and et cetera. It's a tough market to hire people in. We're in a tough location. The economy is cranking along, so there's not a lot of people looking for, for these jobs. And there were a lot of competition, but it's a huge issue. So we are transitioning to, how do we keep our teachers? How can we create a climate where people don't keep leaving? Because the reality is, we've had plenty of turnover, and I'll get into that. This week, for the first time, we plan on issuing letters of assurance to 80% of our staff, so they'll know now that we plan on keeping them for next year, if they choose to stay. And we're asking them to let us know if they're not. And assuring them that they can be paid. There's a fear that teachers have, without getting too complicated, but we can either pay them 22 paychecks or 26. In other words, holding back some of their money, paying them over the summer. There's been this historical concern that if we, if a teacher tells us they're leaving in June, they won't be paid out what they're owed through the summer. So we incorporated in this letter, "Hey, look, we will pay you, we just need to know." Because we want to be fully staffed, we want to be out in the market and get people who are interested in working here, and we want those people, those 80%, to know we're keeping them. The other 20%, some of those are positions that are either going to be eliminated, or they're not licensed, or, so there's a lot of reasons. Most of it is not because of their performance. That decision actually hasn't been made yet. We're trying to focus on developing staff, not persecuting staff, and trying to create systems where they feel that. We have a long way to go with that, too. But that's the philosophical direction we're trying to head in. Another challenge I obviously have to speak to is resources. Our kids need interventions, particularly because we've not had strong instruction in reading for a long time. But math also, and science, and you name it, we need intervention. So we're trying to create structures to do that. And any new monies that we do get are going to go towards intervention. And we need social-emotional support for a lot of kids. There's a lot of kids that are carrying an awful lot of trauma. And that really does impact their, their ability to learn. On the talent side, really so low statistics. 203 teachers, 35% of our teachers were hired after this past July. 50% have less than two years' experience. 67% have less than five years' experience. On the administration side, my building principals have an average of 1.6 years of experience. So there's a huge need for development, huge needs for support. Arguably, I have a team here that spends most of its day supporting those people in their buildings. There's, you know, a lot of room for us to grow. A lot of people want to grow, so it's a matter of can we deliver and support them. So quickly, in summary, it's really about improving our climate culture. We're trying to improve literacy, trying to get language arts and math scores and learning for kids at the high school and middle school up. We will take on math in the elementary schools, once we feel solid on language arts. But that is the entry skill. We're working hard on recruitment. We already have a pool, by the way, of teachers that we're interviewing and talking about now, that are recent grads. We're trying to engage with ed preparation facilities. Colleagues of mine at DESI have been helping us with that outreach. And I feel a little better about that, what that pool looks like now than it did last year. We'll see how that all pans out. And then it comes down to resources for our professional development and student interventions. There's, there's quite a bit. So with that, I'll pause. I'm sure you have questions. Happy to talk about other things.
Thank you for being here.
Sure.
Thanks for outlining some of these very important points. One thing I wanted to ask about, because I do have to leave tonight, unfortunately.
Sure, sure.
It just goes on too much longer. I do apologize for that, Dr. Valar. I'm curious about, from your staff's perspective, the status of Munis implementation, and status of finances overall, and upcoming budget season.
Yeah, thank you. So Munis is a heavy lift. Seth has two people on our side working full-time, pretty much, to support that work. I think it's going well. It hit a rough spot in the fall, is what I would report, at least from my observation. But I'm confident that we're back on track. Again, we were able to pull in some resources, I think that might have helped. It's a critical, important thing for us. Because, you know, even as last year, I'm well aware, folks felt like my budget wasn't very transparent. You know, we're hoping this year will bring some more detail. But having a system like Munis, where we can really keep a historical record, and begin to show projections based on actual expenditures. You know, I don't know about what happened before my arrival, but I can tell you that there wasn't a heck of a lot of really clear information as we pulled it together. So, that's really important. So I see Munis is hugely important on the financial side. And then for us, on the HR side, is also a huge lift, trying to track, you know, we have, depending on where we are at any point, at least 360, 380 employees. And keeping track of that, when you have a high level of turnover, like I talked about, you really need a good system. So, you know, that's important. As far as budget and budget projections, you know, we have begun to have some conversations around that. I was really pleased to see the governor's proposal initially, and happy to see that the Senate is actually trying to push for more money through Chapter 70. Because what has happened for us, again, trying to be fully transparent, I cut 31 positions last year. Schools started. I have monies from Hurricane Maria, there's federal money that came in on top of state money. We have a need, we hire back 28 people for different positions, special ed, EAs, some hall people at the secondary schools. When I lost half my administrative team, I had to bring in some people up there, like significant issues. So I find myself back to a funding cliff, you know, knowing that's where we're going to go. So we have to make some decisions around that. The proposed increases help get us to a better place. It's really going to depend on where that number lands. I, I'm fully, remain fully cognizant of the community's ability, you know, to contribute. And so I'm hoping that we can find a place where, with a reasonable town contribution, close all our gaps, and hopefully, get enough monies to begin to build a structure for student interventions, and to support some of our effort on PD. You know, it's, it's early in that budget game. But definitely, we would be in serious trouble if we didn't see that governor. Because I'm seeing that as the foundation, it's about 1.4 million of new dollars. Without that, you know, I'd be looking at at least a $2.2 million deficit this year. I had a $3.1 last year. So it would be bad. So, right now, I have to wait and see a little bit. But I am hoping to be a little, give you a little more background this year.
Okay, great. If I can just supplement.
Sure.
One thing that I, I know that other, maybe counselors, I know members of the school committee, I don't mean to take anyone's thunder, but I shared some sentiment after getting through the budget last season. It was a very high-level look at the budget. I'm hoping that this year coming forward, we actually see line items and details that maybe some of us have been more accustomed to in the past. I think that'd be very helpful for us, at least as we're looking at evaluating it, considering where we, as a counselor, are going to end up working with you and the town manager to arrive at a number.
Yeah, I think, there's no doubt we need more detail. Where we end up, it's going to be a work in progress. But I think you're going to see more detail this year than last year. And I would imagine next year, there'd be even more. It's, I, I'm fully aware that last year was object level. I stepped in in February, trying to understand where we were, wanted to be sure we're on solid ground. But I, I fully appreciate, the more information we can share, the easier the decisions are for you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Like was true.
Mr. Pameo, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on Counselor Nash's comments, we've had meetings between the school staff, particularly Jeff and Seth, and me and Karen, looking at what we could do to help the school system. They, they have expressed what they believe their needs are. As you know, we're working on our budget right now, trying to get together where I can look at the total package. I've seen all the pieces at this point. So now Karen's working on pulling it all together, so that we can review and look at it. I'm hoping within a week or so, that we're going to be able to sit down with Seth and Jeff again, to go through what we can do. Obviously, we would like to do what we can to support the school system within the means of the entire town. So I just wanted to know that that, that relationship is solid. It is moving forward in a very positive direction. And, and once I have a better grasp of the whole budget, then we'll be meeting again with them, and hopefully coming forward with a, what will be a recommendation for me, for school system funding. Maybe even some alternatives for you guys, again, if you want alternatives. You know, I'm trying to keep the tax rate within a certain area. And, but if counselors want to do even more, I'll probably give you some of those options to do as well.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions going through this. Talked about SWISS quite a bit. Does that, I just wanted to know if it spells out for something, so I can look more into it.
Margot.
School-wide information system. It is a, it's developed by the University of Oregon. It's a nonprofit, it's $200,000 a year for schools, unbelievably expensive.
Thank you.
The budget is paid for by the state at this point, too.
Thank you. My next question was here, on page 4, you wrote down the referrals. But I'm looking for the, you know, legend to see what each color meant. I know that may be more specific question, maybe you can email me with that. I just was generally wondering what the types of disciplinary issues we would be dealing with.
Yeah, it'd probably be easier for me to display it at one point, where we could break it down, you could take a look. You know, they're, they're anywhere, I mean, they can be anything. I would tell you that predominant issues are disruption. At the secondary level, it's class cuts. Yeah, a lot, you know, defiance, not following directions. But Jackie, I'm happy, you know, we meet once a month, I'm happy to show you, and then that way you can see.
Yeah, I was curious, so looking for the legend, and I was curious about it.
Yep.
Okay, here, on page 7, I was looking at the implementation of the new standards-based curriculum. I was wondering about student mastery. That was the only area we saw a decrease. Was that because of the complexity of the curriculum being implemented?
That's the theory. You see high levels of mastery with low levels of rigor. That's where we started. And then you raise the rigor, the mastery comes down. Ideal, over time, you want to see both go up. But it, and we have to be cognizant, we do have students who have pretty significant learning gaps, and just raised the level of requirements. So helping teachers help kids be successful at, too. But yeah, that's, that's why we see that.
I also just wanted to make a comment about Southridge Academy. I've been very hopeful that this would be a successful program, one of the first in the house. I'm glad to see it's starting to turn around, and we're starting to see results. I'm happy to see that we have a grant. Hoping that you guys get that grant to continue to expand the program. I see it as a huge asset here in Southridge. I'm really looking forward to the continued growth of that program.
Thank you.
Based on that, I'm happy to hear that we got a little more budget details tonight. What we're looking at is the part of that 20% cut you were talking about of not retaining, you say keeping 80% of teachers, or in staff in general, 20%. You said with licensing issues, et cetera. Is part of that also budgetary, trying to combine positions due to, could be possible budgetary concerns?
So we looked hard at that, because it is a moving target, trying to figure out where reductions would be. So we couldn't give everyone an assurance at the moment, because there are some programs that we say, "Hmm, you know, we'll have to see where we land." So that is a concern. There are others who, you know, will likely have a hard conversation with and say, "Well, June 15th is the deadline. If things get look better, you might get a letter." So there was a hodgepodge of that. But budget is a concern with several of our programs.
Everything I have locked down, if I come up with more questions, I'll ask you.
Sure.
Chairman?
Back there first.
Okay, well, the, you're, you're up?
No, no, I'll defer.
Counselor Steve's before.
Actually, I want to follow up on with a question Jackie asked about the curriculum chart you've got. Could you explain a little bit about how, what it is that the kids are actually doing in terms of how the complexity changed? You mentioned rigorous, complex texts, might, I put a note, meaning what? What were they doing before, and what are they doing now?
Often, not always, but one of the easiest ways to look at is, we're talking about going from filling in worksheets to reading authentic literature, and talking about author's purpose. from filling in worksheets to reading authentic literature, and talking about author's purpose, and delving into the theme, and understanding, you know, all the literary aspects of text, and then writing about it. So, there was a hodgepodge that was going on, because people left to their own. They were working their best to meet kids' needs, and now we're providing them a tool that, what's strong about this is it essentially guarantees that there's gonna be a level of rigor and complexity. Now, there's still a whole host of instructional strategies that need to happen that require years to master as a really effective teacher, so we have to move folks along. That's gonna take time, it takes a lot of good feedback, but we're seeing them embrace that. So, yeah.
And also, could you explain a little bit, this, listening here, there's always one-point-twos and two-point-threes and other stuff. Can you just?
So, it's, so it's a four-point scale. There's a, there's a whole tool, and it's a pretty elaborate tool that takes seasoned educators a while to learn how to use, but essentially, it breaks quality instruction, standards-based instruction into scales of one to four. And so, that's why you get all these averages and these fractional changes, because it's based on ratings that multiple people through observation have given, and then you try to calibrate. So, really, on this, a three is phenomenal, and very rare. We were pleased, and actually, one of our walkthroughs, one of our teachers had a lesson that was at least a three. And again, the team we work with work across the country, and getting a three is super rare, and they're like high-fiving us, because they're like, this is a legit, super awesome lesson that we just observed, which, you know, was awesome, because other teachers, look, you can nail it, you know, this can happen. Because sometimes there's a belief that, oh, you know, somehow we have something different here. Great instructional work.
I read today on the internet, a parent saying that their student is in advanced chemistry, and is having trouble with the teacher, and she's talking about pulling her student out to homeschooling, because of course, we only have one advanced chemistry teacher. There's no place else to put this child, and what do we do in a case like that? Because the child is the one who's entitled to the education. What's?
So, we have a very small high school, so you're right, you can only have so many sections, and then recruiting math teachers capable of teaching AP and other high-level chemistry science teachers is very difficult. So, I would first encourage that parent to speak to the principal, and if they're not happy with that, either myself or Dr. Ortiz.
Apparently, according to the internet, this parent has been through the, through the loop.
So, I can tell you that they have not spoken with me, and I don't think they've spoken with my assistant superintendents, and I would encourage them to do so. Unfortunately, we live in a time when, you know, Facebook and things don't give us good information. So, I suggest, any parent next to this last night, we meet with people, and we don't turn them down. We make sure that they meet with someone who can help them. That would mean Pat Danby, the principal of the high school, Dr. Ortiz is his supervisor, you can talk to Dr. Ortiz, Margot, myself, we wanna help people solve their problems.
Okay. Just wanna respond a little bit. You know, this is an interesting question, because on an occasional basis on the internet, I see some posts about the school system. Kids fired, or recently, the one was about a kindergarten group was being picked on on the bus, and it blows my mind that people will comment on Facebook that they don't talk to the staff, and they never call him. So, I took a copy of that post, and I sent it to Jeff, and said, Jeff, look at this. And he responded back, and he was gonna look into it. But I don't quite, I have a hard time, if parents care so much, they go on Facebook and post it. That's meaningless to me. You need to make the call to the principal, because it's a fact to the principal, you gotta go to the superintendent. But, Facebook is becoming like, okay, that's where I'll spout off, and hope somebody does something about it, and it's just really not a good vehicle for getting any, anything done. We need to encourage people not to talk on Facebook, but to actually call somebody at the staff level and try to get it done.
Well, I, you know, I was thinking of weighing in, and I did not know what it was I should be saying. So, now I know people answer, call this one, this one, and this one.
And again, to be honest with you, I did not let that parent know, actually, I did afterwards. I took a copy of it, I sent this to Jeff, and then I just sent the note, this is went to the school receiver, and that's it. I don't get involved in gave you, that's interesting, but I wanted him to know about it.
Fortunately, I'm in the other position.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta find a way to get him to know.
Yeah.
Because if nobody tells him, he's never gonna find out what the issue is, you know?
And Mary followed up.
What's it?
Mary followed up with that.
Good, good.
Also, I want to, could you, where do things stand as far as charter schools situation goes?
So, yeah.
A couple of years ago.
What we're seeing this year is schools of choice in general, the number of kids choosing to go out is gonna be down.
That's good.
So, about fifteen kids, if I recall. In the charter school, there's actually some subtle changes proposing the funding that might be beneficial to us, so that could help us out. And that, when I mentioned one point four million from the governor's budget, that included potential savings with those two items, so it's not all actually Chapter Seventy, but that's revenue for us. So, it seems to have stabilized. You know, again, I encourage parents to make good choices for their kids. My goal is to make our schools the good choice.
How much are we actually paying out for Detroit side at this point?
Do you know Seth off the top of your head?
Yeah, it's over a million dollars.
Yeah.
That'll be my budget presentation, just so you know.
Yeah.
When I do my budget presentation, I don't lock down every, uh...
Okay, and it's what, no, it's been flowing in that, like the long one.
Somewhere around a million, two, but I don't know exactly.
Yeah. It's a lot.
It's around a million, two, if you take a hundred grand or something.
Hundred grand.
Big numbers, huh?
Unfortunately, that seems insignificant, one point is huge.
First of all, thank you and your team for coming. I appreciate the candor that you obviously give to us every time we meet, and your team as well. Thank you also for allowing me to go with you the other day, myself and Councilor Daniel, through Charleston Street School, and it was pretty, it was eye-opening, and very impressive. I'm very impressed with your staff that you have there. All right, they, I talked to them afterwards quite a few times, so I appreciate that. You talk about the academy. How many kids do you know that are actually outside of that academy? Like, I know, you can't put in the academy, or you're trying to bring back into the academy from this town itself. I mean, is there a number that you may have that's outdoors?
We actually have a waiting list right now. We actually have about four slots open. Our license with the state is to top out at forty, and it's pretty easy to adjust the license or write an amendment. Where our goal is to continue going down this path with the grant that we're finalists for, but also, we could get to a point where we could tuition students in as our program grows. Right now, we're pretty, there's a couple of students that are potentially looking to transfer in from the high school, but...
Now, are you following, or is, are you seeing a trend of them coming in, coming out, coming in, coming out? I mean, is it?
No, the nature of the population of our students is, they have some pretty significant barriers to school, so attendance for some of our students is not good, and I'm not gonna sugarcoat that at all. We definitely have a core of about twenty-five, thirty kids that are pretty consistent and thriving. Just anecdotally, we had a student who was a seventh-grade student last year, that we probably had to put the entire collab building in lockdown for, including Head Start, Central Office, at least a half a dozen times last year, and she is on honor roll, was eligible to play basketball with the high school every...
It's good to hear.
She's not perfect, but she is succeeding, and the graduate we had, I watched get dragged out of the school in handcuffs last year, and she stabilized and was already senior, because it had started, it had capped out at grade ten, and she's like, she's moved on and doing great.
Thank you, that's good to hear. A follow-up question on that one, then, I know we talked about trade wins a few months back. Is that, are you guys having a good communication with them at all?
Would you be okay if we talked offline about that?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Doctor, real quick, you, you kinda implemented a system, like a home monitor system, earlier this year. How's that going?
So, you know, interesting. I was just at the high school this week. Dr. Ortiz, who lives over at the building, is accustomed to us showing up. There's actually been pretty significant improvement, as far as numbers of kids that are late, like even, it wasn't that long ago we were there, and one of the changes, based on some of the analysis and discussion at principal's meeting, is they started having staff tracking kids down, saying, where are you coming from, and like where are you supposed to be, and collecting some more nuanced data, and then addressing sources.
So, you have a standard in place, or a system in place now, that instead of just watching, you're actually getting that.
They're starting to take action, right? And some of this, again, in defense of all my staff there, it appears to me that staff did not feel like, if I engage this student and say, hey, where are you going, and this student gives me a hard time. I don't think they felt, and I think there are still some who don't feel, that someone has their back. Like, the expectation is kids should always engage respectfully with an adult. It's not always the case, and for some kids, that's a strategy. You know, it's like, if I act this way, people are gonna let me do what I want. And so, for a long while, that was what I saw happen regularly. Now, I'm seeing more and more people feel comfortable addressing students, and students accepting the redirection. Again, it's far from perfect, but, you know, and I credit Dr. Ortiz. When I walked out of school last spring and this fall, I would see kids wearing, you know, headphones or whatever, and they knew they weren't supposed to, and I would be with the principal, and nothing changed. I walk the halls now with Dr. Ortiz, a kid comes around a corner they're not supposed to be coming around that corner, they turn around so fast and start going in a different direction. That, to me, is a sign of progress, because kids know.
Right.
Now, again, so far from where I want that school to be, but it is incremental progress.
So, you're setting expectations for those kids to meet, now they're starting to...
And we're trying to create a culture where staff feels like they'll be supported in setting those expectations.
So, that, I have too much last question on that. I mean, do you, are you seeing a buy-in, like we've talked about before? I mean, I've been through commands where they, it's, the morale is very low, and it takes a long time to turn that morale back around. Are you seeing a buy-in?
So, it's fragile, and I think, you know, on some days, I feel like I have more buy-in than others, right? There are days it's slid backwards, but I do think we have, I use the metaphor, we're growing grass, and we have some grass growing, and there's still a lot of dirt spots, like not everyone has bought in, but we're starting to see that. We still need to stabilize, so there are people that are still leaving and going. That creates a lot of problems with that consistency. You know, we've done things like, I don't know, I think it's probably first time in a long time, but at least four long-term suspensions. I'm not proud that we have to boot kids out for a long period of time, but that, it had to be done, right? Because we need to set a tone in that school, and so, it's happened. So, there are some changes, and I think staff recognize that, and are slowly, very slowly saying, hey, maybe these people are actually listening to us and supporting us, because there's been plenty of leadership changes, that if I were a teacher there, I would be very cautious about buying into anything. And so, I think there's gonna take some more time before we get that culture where we need it to be, but I feel like we have made some progress. We do have some strong advocates on the teaching staff. We have, again, the PBIS teams are really all in, and they're supporting that. Our language arts team at the high school is all in on pushing that curriculum. The team leader is doing a phenomenal job. So, there are pockets of great progress, but we have a lot of work to do to earn the trust of a lot of people.
Thank you, that's all I got, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, thank you to Jeff, you and your team for being here, and as always, I always welcome the opportunity that I get to meet with you once a month on behalf of the council, to talk about the issues of the school, and how we can partner together to make changes and positive changes. It's unfortunate that we couldn't do your presentation on the board that you usually do, because I think, from what I learned on that, maybe from the next meeting, when you come up with budget, we kind of figure out a way to do that, because I think when you get into this data, like our school committee chairman Ryan had said, what does this data mean on these different charts? The ability that you have to quickly identify and show that picture is really compelling, that you... So, I think for maybe a future meeting, we have that ability, because I think, I know I've been involved, my colleague, Mr. Lous, has been involved in the school system for a long, long time, and these issues that we talked about today are not new. They're issues that we talked about fifteen years ago. So, that ability to drill down, and we've always heard data, 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 but it's interesting that you're actually able to show us the data, and not just talk about data, when you have that ability to do that. Especially, I think that's important, when you talked about that one student that had, well, that school, we have eighteen referrals, but thirteen on one child, and how you're able to identify and make a strategy for that kid, so that's important. Couple of questions. Elementary literacy program, I know we've talked about it, I know we used to talk about it years ago, how the dibbles that you identify in the elementary grades are how critical that is for the success long-term. Can you just expand on that, maybe for the community, about what that intervention means when it comes to literacy, and how that may affect long-term?
Yeah, so, in kindergarten through, really, grade three, but kindergarten, grade one are really important times for kids, and, you know, one thing I'd advocate is, we gotta get kids to school during those date, those years. Like kindergarten, sometimes people think it's not an important grade, it's hugely important grade, as is first grade, and all the way up to three. But, we teach the basic literacy skills, letter sounds, the blending of letter sounds, how to break apart words and read words, happens in those grade levels. And those are the skills to help kids learn to, we call break the code, learn to sound out, and eventually, through what we call sight words, understand what words are very quickly, and so you can then begin to read sentences, and then you build meaning out of that. Based on our demographic, we have a couple of challenges. You know, we have some of our students come to school without a lot of literacy background at all from home, so they don't have letter sounds, they don't know the alphabet, and so we have a pretty heavy lift to get them where they need to be. And then, even once we get kids decoding, meaning breaking down, sounding out, and saying words, and they begin to develop some sight words, if a student doesn't have a lot of life experience, and they're not surrounded by a lot of print at home, and maybe they don't have parents who talk about issues like this at home, very complex language, they're not likely to comprehend sentences that have inferences and different things. So, that becomes a real heavy challenge for us. You have to teach vocabulary and teach, give kids experiences so they can learn all those words. So, the first step is, we gotta get them to coding, and our data tells us right now, we're not doing that well enough. Like, we need to have more intervention so the kids come out of our early, pre-K one school with those skills solid. Because what we see when we assess kids with a different system, their comprehension skills are very low in grades two through five, and we also see evidence in two through five of kids who still don't have what we call phonics, and the ability to decode words. So, they still are struggling breaking down words, just to understand what word am I reading, never mind making meaning of a series of words. So, that makes grade two through five much harder for those teachers, because the kids aren't even able to read to learn. So, they're trying to teach skills that kids should have learned in kindergarten. So, it's very important for us, and as I'm looking at our budgetary constraints, and I'm doing whatever I can within our footprint, our current allotment, to figure out a way to get more intervention into kindergarten, first grade, so that more kids come out of ERS on grade level, so that in grades two through five, those teachers can focus more on the vocabulary and the inference, and begin to help our kids learn to decode complicated texts, so as they get older. So, it's a really important developmental time. They gotta get those skills, you know, and the good news is, you know, parents at home, and this is a thing that we have to do better, we have to tell parents some things you can do. There's tons of great applications that kids can use on phones, you know, in free time to learn some of these things, really engaging, so it's not like you have to always sit and drill with your child. There's a lot of fun ways that you can help support us. So, we have to get to a place where we have bandwidth to help parents with that, too. But during the day, we're, we gotta change what we do to get better results. So, that's why it's so important, is it's a foundation, and most of school, it's about literacy. Like, most everything else you learn, you need to know how to read. You can't access anything else without it, and unfortunately, we have a lot of kids with gaps, so we gotta, we gotta solve those gaps, which creates frustration, which creates some of our discipline issues, too. I mean, it's all interrelated, not one thing is independent.
Another question on the academy, I guess, Senator Farrick also said that you're a finalist for this grant. What is that expansion with? Is it a grade-level expansion? Is it...
So, the grant, yeah, it's a planning grant, so we could look at... So, the grant, yeah, it's a planning grant, so we could look at, you know, we're in the phases of looking at, what can we do at high school in general? Because, not just us, nationally, across the state, people are saying, "Hey, high school isn't what it used to be, right? Kids coming out of high school don't have the skills that are making sure they're gonna be successful in a four-year college. They're not necessarily helping out Pete down at the Big Bunny, right? They may not be hireable there. They might not be ready for trade schools. Like, I have a son, luckily, was ready, to become an electrician. Like, you need skills. It's no longer just, you know, wiring, which in and of itself is not easy, but there's science behind it, and you gotta learn this stuff. Our employers are telling us kids aren't ready, our schools are telling us. So what are we gonna do different about the high school experience? We look at engagement, it's a huge problem. So we're talking about career pathways, internships, placing kids in business, getting the shadow of people, and our grant application is to say, "Hey, we have this group of kids who are particularly needy, that really need a different type of pathway through school, but we're not giving up on 'em, and we think that if we can support 'em in the right way, they can be successful, graduate and go on." So we're writing a grant to say, "Let's start that process at the academy, as we're beginning plans for what can that process look like at the high school for all kids, what career pathways." If we get that planning grant, it'll help us do some of that research, and some of that thinking, and engagement with people around that, and then we could be eligible for a very large sum of money to support any transformation. So, you know, it's a step at a time, but we tried to paint that vision. So far, they like that vision, now whether or not we get it, it's very competitive.
And, and then, the last question that I have, so we've talked about teachers, retention of teachers, you're going out and getting teachers. I guess my concern would be around the principal end. And I do know that you relaunched the middle school, which was, kudos to the school district to, to actually say, and I take it with all full recognition, that you saw a problem and decided to re, to relaunch a whole different concept mid-year. Because I don't think anybody would wanna take that chance, and was always, "Wait till May." So I applaud you for your efforts to make changes when you need to immediately, as opposed to saying, "Let's wait, let's talk about it." My concern is, Superintendent Ortiz is there, and by all measures that I hear, he's doing a fabulous job, I've seen the interaction that he has, how do you pick the next leader to sustain what he has put in place?
So, I can't predict the future, but what I, what I've hoped for is by having Dr. Ortiz be the secondary redesigned prince, associate, assistant superintendent, is that no matter who gets appointed as principal, my plan for the foreseeable future is to have Dr. Ortiz placed in that building. Because, again, we have 1.6 years' average experience of people as principal. It gets worse when we go to assistant principals and deans, they have no experience. We need to create a sustainable structure. That means someday, we go away, and there's a much smaller footprint here. There's a superintendent, maybe a curriculum director, maybe a business manager. That's sustainable, but right now, we have to build up a lot of skill sets. So, the plan is Dr. Ortiz remains engaged as we restructure the admin team to try to provide support for all of these pieces that I just talked about, climate, culture, and instruction. Try to get some, some stability in who's actually working at the school year over year, because that's been a problem. And have someone with that expertise continue to work with these people. Because if I just pull it out, it's gonna slide right back, there's no doubt about it. So we need to really kinda keep our foot on the pedal, keep monitoring, that's why I spend a lot of time there. We need to know what's going on, and build those people's skills. I do have members of the team that are growing tremendously at both sides, and that's really pleasing, but, you know, we, we'll likely need to, I know I need to hire at least one assistant principal, I am down one at the middle school. I have a person on a short-term contract at the high school, so we're looking, you know, to build that team, but I think I have to keep 'em there a long time.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. So I, as a follow-up to that, you know, obviously, when the state came in as a receivership, you know, everybody thought this was pie in the sky, three years, run, done. And I know our conversations with you and the commissioner was that this is probably six, eight years more of intervention and building capacity. So, my, I guess my question to that, which, which, I, I think as long as we stay on the course with what we have, and don't have all these upheavals, we have potential for success, and I think we can do it, I know we can do it. And you said, obviously, at some point, you'll lock away, the team will lock away, and you have to have that smaller footprint. And I know we've had this conversation, are you looking to some of the younger staff members that you have, teachers obviously that don't have a lot of years' experience, but you're gonna have five, six years to groom them, that they've been in the system, they know our kids, they know the systems that you've built? Are you identifying any of those individuals now that you could potentially groom into future administrators, so that you can have long-term stability?
So, always growing from within is a really good idea for any organization. One good thing that's just recently happened, we haven't, haven't made the selections, but we finally have moved forward with the advanced teacher lane. I don't know if you remember, if anyone's talked about that to anyone here, but part of our teacher contract identifies the potential for teachers to receive an increase in compensation to take on the role of teacher leader, and to be involved more in PD and training and working with their colleagues. To me, a career ladder step, like, if you're interested in going into leadership, and you've kinda got your act together in the classroom, this is an opportunity. So we worked with the SEA, the union, and admin team, and they've reviewed applications, a very rigorous process, and we have five finalists that have been recommended to me, and I'm now actually meeting with them, and then we'll determine, hopefully, we can bring all five on board, but we have to figure out the finance, that's an issue. But that's an example of a build-your-own kind of, like, lead from within, give people distributed leadership opportunities. I would love to have some of our, and we do have a few right now, I'd hate to lose 'em in the classroom, but we have some teachers that are really growing. It would be great to be future assistant principals and later principals. I mean, that is a sign of a healthy system. Because if you create your own succession plan, you build from within, not all hires come from within, because you wanna keep a little, little new blood and some different balance, but every healthy system I've seen has a way of grooming people from within, because then you're not training on all that stuff. They know how things work, they have relationships, they know the community, and they can hit the ground running. So that's always a preference. With all the turnover, it's gonna be a little while. There's few people left with a lot of experience, but we have a pocket now, people three to five years that are really growing. You know, and I was saying, there's a couple of them, they're, they're really growing fast, so that's good. But it's gonna take time, but yeah, that would be my preference.
And I guess my last question, now that you've been here a year, thankfully, do you see that a little more buy-in by the staff, that yes, we are picking up some traction, and that this is gonna be, Dr. Lire and his team's gonna be here next year, and when that year starts, it's not a whole new revamp?
It's a good question. I think there are some people that are beginning to believe that, but there, there are people that are really scarred, like, there's been a lot of change. So, I think folks are still cautious. Like, "Are you really staying?", I still get that question.
Are they cautiously optimistic, though?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I don't like to overstate things, right? I'd rather be wrong to be a little on the negative, and then be surprised, like, "Oh, I missed it a little bit, right? Better than I thought." Because when you overestimate things, then you're not getting it done. And so that's how I always look at it, like, I'd rather be on that, that end of the spectrum. There's absolute evidence of, of teachers, again, buying into the PBIS and putting a lot of time into that, there's teachers that are really working real hard on this curriculum. We're gonna roll out a process in the elementary schools where all the teachers are gonna look at our language arts curriculum and provide feedback compared to other support materials, so that they'll have an opportunity to weigh in. So I think over time, those are the things that are gonna get people to feel more like, "Oh, they really care what we think, and they're gonna stay." So I think that the needle's moved. Every month I'm here, people believe more, I think. But there's absolutely this, "So when are you leaving?", has been for the first, you know, eight months, I heard it every day. And when you look back, you know, I'm going up to the state in a, in a month, and part of my presentation is 11 different leaders in 10 years, at the superintendent-receiver level. And then you delve into that, it's somewhere like eight business managers, and seven assistant superintendents, and nine high school principals, and seven middle school principals, and 12 elementary principals across the three. Like, that's ridiculous. So, that has to stop. So, again, if we can build within, pick some people, build a succession plan, because people will move on, if you hire really good people, they're likely to wanna go up, and you're not gonna have enough high-level positions for everybody. But if you have a system that brings people along, that'll be healthy.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Just a quick comment. I'm the guy that always brings it to the simple point, that when I look at the district, and I look at a disciplinary standard, retention, and staff support, I think that, to a point that Jack mentioned, making the move you made in the middle of the year is something that not even an experienced school committee member has seen, I thought it was gutsy, and I thought it was the right call, because you acted on data, you acted on other actions that created a reaction. But I think the biggest thing is, is your retention and your support, and, if I may, I've never met Dr. Ortiz, I really don't know him, but I'm the guy that's around town 24/7, a businessman, own a couple of businesses, and people talk. They talk about how much money we're spending on schools, they talk about production schools. The one thing that came out is, "Dr. Ortiz, Dr. Ortiz, don't know the guy, haven't met him, and tonight after, I'm gonna meet him." But, they wanna know how long he's gonna stay here, your staff. They feel there's a comfort level with him in the building, at the beginning of the year, there's a fight in the foyer, six classrooms empty out, and run down the hallway. I have film, okay? They send me the film over the phone, and, and I don't see anything, I just cautiously optimistic and supporting the cast here. But again, when the moves are made, and Ortiz steps in, all of a sudden, that doesn't happen anymore. Yeah, you're gonna have skirmishes, we're the kids' business, it's how you handle 'em, it's how you judge. But the disciplinary standard in the beginning, it wasn't one, and it wasn't expectations. And the kids knew how to play the adults better than ever. So, your description tonight was well-taken, and I think those three, you know, the retention of teachers is paramount, the retention of you is paramount. And then, discipline, if a kid can behave long enough to comprehend and not disturb all the other kids also on top of it, I think it's a big plus. So, again, I sit here cautiously, optimistic, supportive of the school district, but, you know, I've got a real bad taste, not from you, and not from what's happening, from when Desi first got here. And I leave it behind me, hopefully, we can just move forward and attack those disciplinary standards, and those retention of teachers, and support staff, to a point where people will wanna stay here. I know you do have some staff that wants to stay, and you're still gonna have staff that wants to move on. But, we'll work at it, I'm here as a volunteer, and I just wanna say, Dr. Ortiz, thank you very much for being here, along with the rest of the staff, and I just thought that the public notices a difference. We're involved, and we hear it, we should say it, and I think that you've had a great impact at the middle school. Thanks.
Very much appreciated.
Sounds like a good closing, actually.
Here's what it is.
I just, I, I was sitting here, I, I was thinking about how we're gonna be missing, we weren't gonna talk about the printage program, and how that's developing, and how, what we're seeing in that, because that was a really important step in a parent program, was to get into that dual language program in the school district.
Yeah, and, you know, it's...
I'm sorry, Doug, what was the program?
I talked dual language.
Oh, the dual language, yeah.
You know, we're planning to expand to grade three. Retaining teachers who have the capacity to teach in Spanish remains number-one challenge. We actually think we have a candidate for grade three, but we'll keep our fingers crossed. I mean, that's gonna be the challenge over and over again. Building the capacity of teachers in that environment is even more complicated than everything we talked about, because it's two languages. So, so, we're kind of moving forward on it, hoping to expand. Dr. Ortiz and I actually met at University of Connecticut 20 years ago, actually 25 years ago, in language acquisition courses, and that's one of the expertises that he brought to the district. And so, now, because I had to place him at the middle school, it's, creates a tension, because we're trying to support both. But, honestly, to the point you made, when, when you experience and see the data, that became the crisis that had to be dealt with. Safety first, period. Everything else comes second. So, our challenge is to continue to find and develop those educators, so that that program can be of the highest quality. And even today, in conversations about the high school, I raised, like, "Hey, guys, if you've got this dual-language program, you better have a plan for middle school, high school, when those kids get there." Sometimes I, I'm just gonna say, I feel like I'm cleaning up a turnaround, right? Like, there were some things that were put in place that weren't thought through, and so now we gotta think 'em through. And, and this is one of them, like, how are we gonna handle that threat as it goes up through the high school? It's a huge advantage for kids if we do this right, tremendous advantage for them. So, we wanna do it right, so, a lot of work there, too. Challenge.
Okay, I have just a couple of questions, if I could. Thank you all for being here, this is really wonderful, I'm very pleased that you're able to come here, and kinda reinforce what I've seen, what the councils have seen, as it toured, and to be able to get it out to the public, I think is, is really very, very important. Your affiliation with UConn has gone for five years?
That's what the MOU is for right now, it is.
Great, and a potential for longer, if need be?
I honestly don't know, I think that would depend on the federal side of things, but I couldn't tell you off the bat.
Is there, is there a, up in the sky cost for, for what these services would be if you had to pay for them?
Oh, boy, a lot, hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of thousands, okay. Do you have, just off the top of your head, do you have a sense as to how much you've been able, the, the district has been able to garner in terms of grants, to supplement your budget for the past year?
Um, well, I mean, I mean, just, it's, probably this year's like over $3 million.
$3 million, okay.
You know, and, and one, one good example is, we received approximately $1 million from the state as a receivership district. So the state comes up with a special grant, given just to a handful of districts, and that, for us, is a million dollars.
Okay.
But then we also have other programs, like the 21st Century Grant, that provides an upper-school program, the SRG Grant for the middle high school, we've mentioned earlier about Hurricane Maria, so this year, at least over $3 million.
So it's safe to say, then, that you're not just relying on, on tax dollars, you are going out and finding, you're ripping up every stone that you can find to turn up another dollar, another dollar, another dollar?
Absolutely.
Great, okay, that's, that's important, because, you know, I think the town should do its part, but it's nice that you're doing your part as well, to help us out, to help you out, and to help the kids out. Is it safe to say that, that some of the uptick in discipline in the second half of the year might have been because of the increased rigor?
You mean the...
Because your, your perseverance levels, I noticed your perseverance levels went up nicely, at the high school in particular, and I'm just wondering if there are some kids that haven't quite figured out how to persevere yet, and get frustrated instead?
I think that, I don't have data to parse that out, I haven't done that analysis, I think that makes sense, that students who are frustrated are more likely to try to use avoidance-type behaviors, and, and not either go to the class, or then get thrown out of class, rather than do a task that's really complicated. But, I also would say that I have seen, and you might recall, we saw classes where kids were not paying any attention, and I'm seeing more buy-in from kids. So I'm happy about it. Not perfect, believe me, there's still air buds that drive me crazy, that where I take them out, like, I could just go around and cut those things, I get myself in trouble.
You don't have to anymore, either.
And no, now they got the wireless ones, but, you know, it's a major distraction for kids, and, and figuring that out. But, I think there's, there's a tension there, but I think there's actually improvement in, in some of the classrooms, not all. Some of the classroom teachers have figured out, they're gonna be supported, and they can command attention, and that's important.
Okay, so you feel the teachers are cognizant of this tension, and are responding as well, so that you should... well, so that you should see improvement again?
Yeah, well, we definitely, as we follow these data, if we don't see improvement, then we have to change direction or increase support or figure out what, what's going wrong. That's the key to this whole process and how I try to approach everything is, and it's not perfect science, some of our tools we develop aren't something that you could use to do a scientific study and compare from one district to another. But in context, they can tell us, gee, we think these are good things that should be happening, are we seeing them? And if we are, yet students aren't improving, well, maybe our assumptions aren't right and we need to change them and revisit it. But what we can't do is accept that things can't change. That's why we change the middle school, like, and we'll keep changing things until we get on a course where data is showing constant improvement. The underlying philosophy here is we can improve, our kids can do better. So what are we gonna do differently to get better? And so until that equation works out, we'll keep going at it.
Okay, I'm good. Who else? Okay, Dr. Vilar, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to the staff for coming as well. I definitely appreciate this, I feel welcome coming.
Well, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Appreciate it.